Stormwater does tend to sheet flow in a westerly direction. And we've sized those based on a DEP standard for Chapter 500. And those are shown, and those will be deed restricted and put into the recorded documents. There was asked about three intermittent streams along this boundary line, and we've shown those in a fairly heavy black line. They don't really come onto the property. They kind of originate here and head in a sort of a northwesterly direction. The 75-foot setback from the perennial stream comes underneath Mitchell Hill Road and comes across the corner. I felt like we had the setbacks shown properly or clearly, and it did not impact any of the buildable area for Lot 9. Of course, Lot 9 exceeds the 30,000 square feet that's required, and also the frontages exceed what we've been required. So again, the proposed buffers on the rail will be boarded by mapped wetland. This buffer will provide the protection of the wetland well in excess of the 25-foot that is mandated by the ordinance. And we will mark these with buffer pins with red caps that say "Buffer No Disturb." That's a DEP requirement if this did require a permit from them. So that's what we'd like to do on the backs of those lots to give the homeowner a reference point of no disturbance and don't go any further. We have added to the note number four on the plans the start and completion date of the peer review, and the original wetland review was added to that. The consultant completed the wetland, Vernal Pool has prepared an additional memo which is in your packet, and Alexander will speak to that in a minute. We've asked, expand Note 20, which details the open space use, and we have a homeowner's doc in draft form from the attorneys. Those documents will be submitted prior to the next appearance. Talked about shared driveways. The only shared driveway will be between lots five and six, given how the existing location of that driveway comes across. All the lots will have their own driveway with a turnaround onsite so that nobody's backing out onto Mitchell Hill Road. And all the driveways, the site distance was discussed at length with peer review for traffic engineering. We've reviewed those, we've shown them on the plan, and just in the last review, they asked to review the site distance heading to the north from Lot 9. And I did that. It's about 500 feet, so it certainly exceeds the requirement of 305 feet, which the traffic engineers have outlined. We had a detail added to the plan sheet, was an inlet protection, culvert, riprap detail, just some things that we wanted to make sure we understood is that each lot owner will be responsible for paying the recreational fee. The applicant has agreed to put a fire tank. We've been working with the fire department, trying to establish the best location. And I think what we've come up with is it'll be in the area of the common line of six and seven, just downhill from the existing house that's there. They really weren't, they didn't really, I won't say they didn't care, but they didn't really have a preference. We do have a detail of what that'll look like with the dry hydrant on the side of the road with the property on the west side of the Mitchell Hill Road. We've added all the standard notes, as you can see, copious notes here, which are the standard approval notes to be ready for final approval. During the comment period last, the last meeting, there was a talk about water availability, water quality. We did get a letter from a well driller, which is part of the packet, stating actual history and evidence of drilling wells in this area. The existing house on Lot 6 has adequate water quality and quantity. And we also reviewed the main geological survey map, and it's an eight-and-a-half-by-eleven in your submission packet. This blow-up of it indicates, indicates the, here's our site, I don't know if you can read that or not. It's upside down. Our site is right here. You can see by the dots, and on your eight-and-a-half-by-eleven, they're yellow, or it's color-coded based on the yield of the wells. So this is the main geological website. These wells, again, our site is here. There's a sort of wells drilled with a yield anywhere from four to 10 or 15 gallons per minute. And there was even one well that was like 25 to 40 gallons per minute, which you could serve a lot of homes with that. So we feel like we've, with testimony and the letter, we feel like we've accomplished, you know, the responses that the board asked for. We did receive another review memo from Planning Office that had a half a dozen items here. As we just talked about the stormwater, how that's going to be handled, we will meet the Chapter 419 post-construction stormwater ordinance. Limits on disturbance on the buffers. Again, I talked about the method of pins with buffer caps to indicate a limit of what the lot can handle for clearing and any disturbance. Stormwater buffers, they'll be deed restricted and recorded in the registry of deeds. The 75-foot setback, it says from intermittent stream, I think it just meant the perennial, because these intermittent streams out here, there are no setback issues. And again, I can talk to Planning Office on that to see if we need to just increase that notice that it's available there. Open space homeowner's docs, as I said, and they were brought up in this memo here, they will be submitted. They're in a draft form. Site distances were measured correctly. Just my memo referenced the wrong eye height and vehicle height, but it was a two-and-a-half foot eye height and a 4.25 vehicle height. And all the site distances that were asked for exceed what would be required. Water supply, again, with the evidence with the letter and the, from the main geological society maps that I have here. I'm going to ask Alexander Finnamore from VHB to come up and just talk a little bit to close out my submission and presentation, and then we'll go with questions from there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Alex Finnamore. I'm an environmental scientist with VHB Inc. in South Portland. I'm a certified wetland scientist in New Hampshire and a licensed site evaluator in Maine. Just to give you a little background, since I'm probably a fresh face to all of you, I graduated from University of Rhode Island with a Bachelor's of Science in Environmental Science and Management with a focus on wetland ecology. I have 13 years of experience as an environmental consultant, of which a majority of the time has been spent in the field delineating wetlands and performing over 1,000 vernal pool surveys throughout New England. I am an active member of the main Association of Wetland Scientists and have served on its executive committee as secretary and helped draft and provide comments representing this organization during the development of the vernal pool regulations under the Maine Department of Environmental Protection's Chapter 335 Significant Wildlife Habitat Rules. On August 25th, 2017, I performed the wetland delineation onsite. And although the wetland delineation is not completed during the vernal pool indicator species breeding period, which is typically in April, which as pointed out is coming right up, or could be even sooner this year with the proposed weather coming up here. But I conducted a thorough investigation looking for any depressions that might have sufficient hydroperiod to support breeding populations of vernal pool indicator species. Evidence of such areas typically includes standing water or depressions with water-stained leaves that may contain standing water for brief time during the spring. I observed no such depressions during this time. I again visited the site on November 24th in response to the comments received by Cumberland County Soil and Water Conservation District's peer review, and again thoroughly investigated site for wetlands, water bodies, and potential vernal pool depressions, and again found none. Therefore, I would kindly ask the planning board at this time to consider waiving the need for the spring vernal pool survey. It is my professional opinion that there are not any areas on this site that could even support habitat for vernal pool indicator species as defined by both Maine DEP and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. Thank you.
Chairman, I got one more point to just outline here. There was a letter from Wallace Fengler, who's in a butter out in the back, and Pat Donohue spoke to him at length over the weekend. And, you know, he's got some concerns in there, and I think some of them are what we're addressing tonight. And I think from what Pat said, one of his biggest concerns is what's going to happen to that land out in the back? I mean, he abuts it, and Pat said, "Well, it's got to stay as open space. It can't be developed," which I think pleased him. And also, this discussion that's going to continue with him about maybe putting this and maybe some of his land in a conservation easement to just, that's kind of what he was concerned about and looking at. So that dialogue's ongoing, and I think, you know, the other issues that Mr. Fengler had, I think we've spoken to them tonight. That's where that stands. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We are going to have some public comment on this this evening, so at this time, I'd like to open it up for any public comment that's here. Please remember to state your name, your address, and try to contain it to five minutes and not be repetitive. Thank you.
My name is Kenneth Fengler. I'm Wally Fengler's son. This is a side note on the conversation. My dad is traveling time, so I may comment to that letter in a few seconds. My address is 6 Mitchell Hill Road in Scarborough, Maine. I did speak at the last meeting about water quality concerns, wells and whatnot, and I was curious if it's out there for discussion, was the name of the well driller? I don't have the packets that you have in front of you.
We do have the names of the well driller, yes.
You might, I mean, is it one of the Hillecks or?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, Joe Gomp, Gomp.
Okay. So I do reckon, I do see some changes in the plan, which I think is beneficial, but, you know, I noticed the change in Lot 6, and I think, and I certainly see the buffer indicators at the back of the lots, and I think those are both improvements. I think myself and some of the others that have spoke at the last meeting still probably feel most of concern with reference to compact development and its influence on the nature, rural nature of the roadway. I do still recognize that we are setting off a big deal of open space, and I think that that is, you know, agreeable to everyone. I do sort of feel that the shared driveway that exists between Lot 6 and Lot 5 might be alleviated if we were to look at perhaps consolidating, you know, where things are the most dense is between lots 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. And perhaps if we were looking at, you know, eight lots instead of nine, that might help preserve the spacing, approximate a little bit more the rural nature of the development, you know, and alleviate the concern of shared driveways. I do appreciate that we, the applicant has assured and acknowledged that each driveway will have its own turnaround. That was a concern that I had expressed at the last meeting, and to make sure the people that would be occupying these homes in the future would be entering Mitchell Hill Road going forward. I think one of the concerns that myself, that I have and one of my other neighbors who was unable to be here tonight had asked about was sort of the general stewardship of the open space in the future. Will that be part of the homeowners association? Was there discussion about whether this land would be passed to the land trust, or what sort of oversight, I guess, would there be of the open space? Those are really only my comments and questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have anyone else from the public that would like to speak? See, now I'm going to close public comment. We'll jump right into it. Rick, you want to start us off?
I'm glad to see that some of the public's earlier comments were addressed by the applicant. That was nice. There was one item in the letter from Mr. Fengler that I wanted to ask about was the well exclusion zone on 8 and 9 extend across Mitchell Road? Is it, do they, they don't go onto, do they cross into the lots across the street or just across the road? Juneau?
It's probably just, looking at scale.
I mean, you must, you saw this noted before.
I did, and I think my response wasn't in writing. I think when you get this 100-foot separation, I don't think you get beyond the edge of the right way.
Okay.
These lots up here are, we can go and check that.
Yeah, I'd like to make sure that they don't go into one of these lots.
Yeah, I don't think they do.
Okay. I mean, that's fine. That's would be my.
If we had to, we could slide the septic system a little bit further onto the lot and make that, make that distance secure.
Okay. And then, there was, I know that the gentleman who talked about the vernal pools, maybe he'd be the one to speak to this, but we were missing some streams and stuff last time, right? So has it been fully delineated, every, all the streams have been identified? I believe there was a stream crossing through Lot 1 that wasn't on the map last time, or maybe?
Yeah, I can speak to that.
What was the stream?
With my first delineation back in August, the back property line that I was provided came more like this, so I wasn't aware that these streams were even on the property at the time, so that's why I came back after the conservation, the Cumberland County Soil and Water Conservation Commission had a comment that some streams had been missed. That's why I came back in November to get those streams.
So are we confident that all the streams have been identified and all the setbacks are met?
I'm confident they've all been identified. I can speak to the setbacks, but I believe they have.
And just in terms of the setbacks, I think the only thing that we couldn't quite tell is on Lot 1, and as you said, it's the perennial stream. There's just a lot of layers, so it's hard to tell where that 75-foot setback line.
Which lot is that?
I think it's Lot, oh, Lot 9, I'm sorry. In the very northerly corner of it, right? Just hard to tell, there's just, as I said, there's a lot of layers on it, it was hard to tell. It's a matter of feet if it is, so we just wanted to.
It is out of the building, but I can, I can, you know, improve that designation, determination.
All right. Yeah, as long as they're all been identified, there's not anything running right across. I mean, you can get a permit by rule, I'm sure if you have to.
Yeah, we could, but we won't need to, so thank you.
All right. And then, I guess, I think the intent was to, well, I'm not sure what the intent is, but if the intent is to sell these as lots, how are we going to guarantee that each driveway has a turnaround? Is it going to be the deed? How would that work?
It'll be a condition of approval, and so code enforcement, upon granting a building permit or occupancy permit, the driveway needs to show a turnaround.
Okay, that sounds good. I like that. Yeah, and then, and the existing house, you said it already, it has a good producing well and a septic, you're not, there's no plans to demo that house or anything? That's just going to kind of stay like it is right now?
It will stay, correct.
Are you selling that as?
It'll be sold with Lot 6 or as Lot 6 when this is approved.
Okay. Yep, that's, sorry.
Thank you, Rick. Richard?
I actually don't have any more questions. I'm comfortable with the assessment on the vernal pools. I'm familiar with the University of Rhode Island, and they have quality programs, so I'm comfortable with a graduate from URI. And I have no more questions.
Thank you.
The only question I have is on the wells, because that was a big topic last time you were here.
Sure.
And I have a document from Mr. Hilleck, or his representative, saying there's no problem. And there was another, there was another document saying, is there another one confirming that?
There is a document from the Maine Geological Survey.
Okay, so we're satisfied that there's not a problem with wells, groundwater? Is that another hard question?
You have information provided to us that states there is, there should not be a problem with the wells.
That is a hard question.
So, yeah, the information's been provided, the standard is to the effect of the applicant should provide evidence that there's suitable capacity for water, water supply.
Okay. All right. I have no other questions then.
Thank you. Yeah, I was glad to see that you've done a lot of cleanup since the last presentation. It looks pretty good. I am going to ask the board specifically to comment on whether or not, how your opinion on the waiver request from the applicant on a vernal pool assessment, whereas it might be, you know, we still, we're in a position now where you can still provide a preliminary approval this evening, have that study conducted before they show up for a final approval, and have that information in hand, and want some feedback from the board in general as to whether or not it's worth the exercise, in your opinion, to have that done at all. The applicant is preferring not to. I think we, as a board and a town, probably, my, I think staff would enjoy seeing one, not, because it makes them happy, but because you've got to check a box. I mean, you really do on some of the stuff, so.
Can I ask a question to Angela to clarify my answer to you?
Sure.
If there's a vernal pool and it's in the open space, would it affect the current proposal?
Well, I think that goes back to what Nick was saying, that if you do it before final, if they found one, it might impact, say, a lot, or how, they might lose a lot or something like that because of the ring that comes out around.
Oh, because of the radius, no build radius around the vernal pool?
Well, yeah, the zone of impact or whatever around the vernal pool. So that's how it would impact the final subdivision plan, or it could.
So whenever anyone's ready to offer some feedback on that, I'll go out and say it. I think it's worth the exercise. And, you know, can we limit it to the lots? I mean, I think that was probably where Rick was going with that question. Or at least, you know, within the 75 feet of the stream setback lot? Is there, is there a way to limit it?
A vernal pool has a larger.
Has a larger range than the setback?
Yeah, and that's why they're important.
What is the size?
Because it can impact. And I guess I would ask maybe their, like how that would impact.
There's two, there's, well, yeah, I'm sure I'm better.
What is the, what is the size of the setback around a vernal pool?
Okay, that's a, I could go on for a long time about that, but I'll try to narrow it down. So according to the Maine Department of Environmental Protection, there's a 250-foot jurisdictional buffer around a vernal pool that is determined a significant vernal pool, which meets certain criteria, generally abundance of certain species. And then, the Army Corps of Engineers has a 750-foot radius, but that is only triggered if you impact wetlands, and this project does not impact any well, and so it wouldn't even go there. One point I would like to bring up, either way on your decision, is if there, what, I'm just hypothetically speaking here, there's a vernal pool somewhere in the, on the open space, I'd like to point out that lots 9 through 5 are all in cleared areas to begin with, and when you, when you're dealing with Maine Department of Environmental Protection, they're, within their 250-foot radius, they're looking at area that has not been cleared yet, and all those lots are fields, so they would reconsider developed, just food for thought.
So in the, in the sense, the real, the real study that would impact you would be 1 through 4, lots 1 through 4?
If there was a pool within 250 feet, that met significant criteria.
I would say give them conditional approval and look for the pool near those lots.
He's found no, no evidence of any pools up to this point, but he hasn't done anything in the spring when they have.
Correct.
I think you should go on and check.
I'd like to make one other quick point, that the wetlands, for those other southern lots, lots 1 through 4, the wetlands are much, are pretty far downhill, as you can see by the topo and, yeah, and to be defined as a vernal pool, I'm sure you've all been trained on this or are familiar with it, they fall within the wetlands.
Lots 1 through 4, there are no wetlands, so the wetlands, this is all, if a vernal pool exists, it's in here. And as I've indicated in my letter and then Alexander, there are no site characteristics. You can't have an inlet or an outlet. It's going to be a contained depression in a wetland area, and none were found prior to snow.
So are you looking for a motion or?
Looking for feedback as to whether or not the applicant's request for a waiver to any vernal pool study.
Okay, just to get the discussion going, I would, I would be willing to waive that for those lots 1 through 4.
You're waiving for lots 1 through 4?
Yeah, for a vernal pool study.
And 5 through 9 are fields and?
Like he says, it's just a field anyway.
Right. It could affect a back property line, boundary, though? That is, that is possible?
The wetlands come into the back, or they're along the back.
But of lots 9 through 5, you could, you could have an impact to the boundary line?
If there's a vernal pool, but again, you know, in a detailed site walk.
So from what I hear from Roger, 5 through 9 would be an area, I'm sorry, 6 through 9, or 5 through 9, would be the area, 5, 5 through 9 would be the area of study that the board would be interested in?
No, I'm saying, based on what he says, that's, that's basically a field. There's no wooded areas there, and it's not likely to be any vernal pools there. Isn't that what?
Well, a vernal pool, it would have to be an undisturbed area.
Right, which is 1 through 4.
And there's no wetlands on the, on these lots.
Right.
It's in, it's in the rear.
Yeah. So I'm saying, at least as I understand what you're saying, lots 1 through 4, that, those lots are not disturbed.
Lots 1 through 4 are native, you know, forest.
And that's where?
With the steep slopes coming down, there's no, there's no wetland and no, no potential, certainly up there.
Right. Okay. On where I stand?
No.
I got a question, I got a follow-up question for my vernal pool man. Can you come around? Simple question. Is it possible that there's a vernal pool in that wetland within 250 feet of lots 1 through 4?
From my two surveys, I would, I did not observe one. Hypothetically, there could be, but from my, again, from my two surveys, where I systematically grid walked, I did not see any depressions that raised any flags to me.
I understand, and I'm sure you're, you're most likely right.
No, I understand.
And you said in April, which is February, March, April, you'd be able to identify if there were, most likely be able to identify if there was a pool in that area within 250 feet of those lots?
Correct. The, according to the Maine DEP and U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, the proper time to do a vernal pool survey is in April while they're breeding, if there's potential for a pool to occur.
Okay, okay. So most likely, there isn't a vernal pool within that, but there's potentially, there could be, is what he's saying. So if there could be a vernal pool within 250 feet of lots 1 through 4, then I would move to give them conditional approval on the entire subdivision with the approval to work on the cleared lots, because they've already cleared, so the vernal pool has no bearing on those cleared lots. And then, in April, you come back with the information to Jay or Angela, and then they get full approval. Is that going to adversely affect your timeline at all?
With what?
If we give you conditional approval for the?
Well, again, I understand, you know, this concern all over the board here. You're talking about lots 1 through 4 being subject to a vernal pool, and, you know, the closest wetland from these sites here, you know, that's another, that's another 2 to 3 to 4 or 500 feet from the backs of these lots. So, and the grade on that is anywhere from 6 to 10 percent. And again, you need a wetland, so this, this area is really, to me, pretty safe from any potential.
I understand, pretty safe. I understand what you're saying, and I'm sure you're most likely right, but I would approve to have that, have that looked at.
So you're making a formal motion to grant conditional approval? So you're, you're making a formal motion to grant conditional approval pending, well, not pending, but asking the applicant to provide a vernal pool study for lots one through four? Is that your motion?
Second.
I have a, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Can I?
Yes.
First, should, should this get approved? I want to be sure for point of clarity. When, when we say for lots one through, was it four or five?
Four.
Four, one through four.
That's the motion.
We're talking about ensuring that there's no vernal pool within 250 feet or 750 feet of the back line? We're not talking about on the actual lots themselves?
Correct.
Okay.
So it would be within 250?
Within the wetlands, okay. I just want to be sure we all, that's where they would be.
That, that is correct? That is your motion? Within 250 feet of the back property line on lots one through four?
I would say whatever the, whatever meets the DEP requirement, because I don't know, I don't have the DEP requirement right in front of me, but whatever meets the DEP requirement, which is according to my vernal pool man, is 250 feet, but I don't have that in front of me to write down, but I would say we can, we give it approval based on the, the, the proof that there is no vernal pool that affects any of the lots. And it doesn't have to even, we don't even have to name one through fours. If the, if the rule is that a cleared lot is not subject to any vernal pool requirements, then we can just say that any, that, that, any lot that is affected by a vernal pool be, you know, redefined or, or whatever needs to be. I mean, most likely what we're going to find is that there isn't a vernal pool there, but I think I heard at least once that there could be, and I, I don't think that we can get around that.
Okay, is there, I have a little to add to the discussion. I think, for better for worse, I think, I think we should look at doing the study that incorporates all of the lots from 250 feet out. And, and if you can find a wetland that's 80 feet away from the back property line in that wetland area, I know it's a cleared area, and they're saying, you know, we should know. I think that's what it was asked of them, we should know that there's a vernal pool anywhere along those back lines. I think limiting the scope of their research is warranted here, because it's an enormous piece of property, and we're talking about where their impact will be. I, you know, I don't think it hurts us to get the information, and I don't think it's a whole lot of extra effort for them to gather that information on the five more lots. That's my two cents on the discussion.
That's second, bud.
Well, you have a motion and a second, so we need to vote on the pending motion. So all in favor of?
Unless you want to make an amendment to that motion in the form of your discussion, just putting it down.
I could, I could amend, so.
And I know you know my rules better than I.
I do. I will motion, I could amend. I was just going to let it fail and then re-motion, but okay.
But I don't know if it was going to fail.
So I will make a, a motion to amend that we include all lots be researched for vernal pools within the 250-foot back lot lines. That's my amended motion.
Let's see, you want to say something?
That's my amended motion. I think we're at the board level at this point. I got a second on the amended motion, so. Any discussion on the amended motion? Okay, I need a vote on the amended motion. All in favor of limiting a vernal pool study to the 250 feet behind property lines one through nine? Thanks. All right, Laura, okay, so we have now a motion, an amended motion that we can vote on the main motion, which is to provide preliminary approval for the Mitchell Hill, sorry, I want to get the name correct, 48 Mitchell Hill Road development, with the condition that a vernal pool study be conducted within 250 feet of lots one through nine back property line. Is there?
Second.
We already seconded it. That's the new motion, so all in favor. There you go, you have a preliminary approval after some light work here. Good luck. Rock Church requests a site plan amendment for 66 Gorham Road, assessors map R58 Lot 19. Jay or Jamel?
Yeah, I think I'll kick this one off. Let's see, so this is an application for, as you noted, a site plan amendment to the Rock Church. This property is in the R4 district, and therefore we have a use that we actually required before coming to this board, going to the Board of Appeals for an expansion. So they have received the Board of Appeals approval for the expansion of the use, and now they are back before this board for site plan approval. I was actually a little surprised to find out that this item had been all the way almost a year ago, since this was before the board, which, as I said, a little surprising. I think there's been a lot of staff level discussions, and I assumed along the way it had been back before, been back before this board since then, but apparently not. So to bring board members up to speed, this is just up Gorham Road, just past the schools and library. And so as board members may recall, may not, since this has been so long, quite a bit of the conversation that staff has had has really been around the coordination of the site and the development of the site with the Gorham Road Improvement Project that's occurring, or going to occur shortly, we hope. And I think Angela will sort of chime in on a couple of those elements here shortly. But just to sort of bring the board up to speed on that, a couple, so you've received staff comments, as well as comments from Warden Kern and Coral Palmer, peer review on the item. So a couple of the elements that we'll want to touch on, as I said, and Angela might dig in a little deeper on some of these. We talked quite a little bit about site access at the sketch plan. Typically, as board members will know, our site plan standards typically seek to minimize the number of curb cuts on a lot, minimize it to one cut. There's two existing cuts on the site, and the applicant's proposing to maintain two cuts, and really looking at ways to minimize the impacts on the overall Gorham Road Improvement Project and, and their influence on that. So I think there'll be some discussion on that moving forward. And obviously, as part of this project, as you've noted, there's quite a bit of parking expansion, and really understanding the parking needs and demands of the site will be critical for the board as part of this review. As we noted during the last review, and I'm sure board members experienced, currently there's, on Sundays, there's often parking along Gorham Road, which there's a nice adequate width to do that currently, but with the redesign meeting our, our new, or not new anymore, but our complete streets policy and sort of the orientation of the improvements that is going to be minimized moving forward, so really being sure there's adequate parking, both onsite, and I know they're, they have some coordination with the library facility, so just having further discussion about that. Staff also noted that there seems to be some conflicts between some of the existing landscaping and some of the stormwater BMP elements, as well as the snow storage, so just want to be sure we're talking through those and understanding that. And in terms of the building, one of the, the applicants are proposing to use metal siding, which, you know, our, our standards typically seek to, to discourage, however is permitted, provided sort of a high quality, not a very reflective metal, so just want to be sure the board is, you know, really does, as I'm sure you will, a thorough review of the detailing there. And I think the only other thing I want to mention is, and again, I'm sure Angela will touch on this, that talked about how Millbrook crosses this property, at least the corner of the property, and that is on the DEP's threatened streams list, and so we just need to want to be mindful of that. Should note, we did receive an email from the applicant today that had their DOT permit attached, so they have received that, and I guess maybe just clarity around where they stand with DEP would be good going forward as well. So I'll maybe turn it to Angela at this point, if she has anything she wants to highlight.
All right. I guess I just wanted to chime in with majority of staff's stormwater comments. It was really just, I think, minor in nature, but I just wanted to highlight, really, the focus is on that front underdrain soil filter. And, and the only reason I kind of highlighted it is that it's really tight. And so with minor things, I just want to make sure that we have the details nailed down tight. As Jay mentioned, Millbrook is, is right there. We also have, you know, obviously, the coordination with Gorham Road, and you can see our, I'm looking at my screen, but the multi-use path that we're, we're proposing. And then also, I mentioned in the comments about the ability to get to the, and maintain the outlet control structure, which is on the, on the Millbrook side, on the Brook side of that, so farthest away from the parking lot. And so when you factor in the, you know, steeper grading, it's, it's tight in there, and to be able to say, how wide is the berm, how are you going to get over to that structure to, to maintain it in the future? And like I said, each one, each piece is really minor element, but because there's no flexibility in the field when we're constructing this, to say, oh, we're going to move this afoot here, or, you know what I mean? There's, we really need to nail down and make sure that detail and the elevations associated on the detail, that matching the grading, and that we have adequate access around the, around the cars, or they do, to ma, to properly maintain the system.
Thank you. Just want to turn over to the app.
Thank you very much. My name is Tom Greer from Welch Engineering. With me tonight is Pastor Samuelson. What I'd like to do is first give you an overview of where we are in the process from our point of view. I'll then go through some of the site issues that we've made and changed, and walk you through that. And then I'm going to play architect for a little bit, and go through some of the architectural comments that were made, and then Pastor Samuelson will walk you through some of the operations that the church is going to go through to manage the parking, which I think is, is one of the important features of it. What I've shown here on the board is the existing conditions here. Our site is this green area in through here. This is the existing building, and we have the two entrances off Gorham Road. You can come in and make a loop and park. There's a little bit of a play area in the back of it. The front of the site is open grass, and what we have next door is Steve Berg's property with some residential housing here, as well as some residential housing over in this location. This is the Millbrook that Angela talked about coming through here. We also have a drainage swale that runs back through here, and they combine here, and then wind their way to the north and through that area. This is our overall site plan. What we're adding is a little over 13,000 square foot building in the front. It, it obviously is much larger than the existing building. This has been a church site for multiple years with different, different denominations, and the Rock Church has been extremely successful here, and we're very pleased that, that they're here, and we think they can become a, even a more contributing entity to the community. What we're looking at is having, keeping the two entrances and coming in here. As Angela noted, we do have a DOT permit, and that was based on having the two entrances. What happens on Sunday morning is that with a single entrance, if, if you have all the cars coming from this direction down and turning in here, it makes a longer queue over on this side of the, of the road, making people wait. So with the narrower road that's being proposed at Gorham, then this, this ends up being a longer queue. By having these cars turn in here, then more cars can turn in this location, and it shortens the queue up. So from a traffic flow in a view, there is less queuing on 114 with the two entrances, and that was really the motivating factor for DOT to provide the permit. So we think that's a waiver that the board should be able to support pretty handily. We do have shown on here, this is the improvements that will be made. The 10-foot wide pathway that comes down through swings in a little bit in here and works its way back. When we went to the zoning Board of Appeals, we have a setback variance in this location, so we're a little closer to the right-of-way, which actually steps back in this location, and we have that. That's a driving factor for us. We have to start construction by June 12th, which was noted in the, in the staff comments. We need to have a DEP permit in place. Based on my conversation today with Bob Green, it looks like that's going to happen near the end of November, 1st of April. Our plan is to respond to staff's comments and submit so that we can be on the April agenda, and hopefully the DEP permit will be in place at the same time. That will give us enough time to get the building permit in place, and then start digging on January, June 11th. So everything, it works out. So with, with your cooperation, that's where we would like to be. Obviously, tonight, we're not going to get a vote from the board, but we would like to get enough feedback from the board, that if there are any outstanding issues, that the staff isn't brought up, that we can certainly bring those back to the board. As I'll, I'll continue walking my way through here, this existing parking rate in here will remain, and then what we're doing is we're expanding the parking out into this location, and then down along this side, we're expanding it over here. We've worked with our neighbor, Steve Berg. He's been very kind to the, to the church and sees this as a, as a great amenity to his, to his little neighborhood in here. He's allowed us to have a 15-foot easement over here and put landscaping in through here to buffer the tree, buffer the area in this area and through here. Those trees were put together by his landscape architect and what he's looking to put in there, and we're comfortable with them. It's part of the agreement that we'll put them in and maintain them. We do have stormwater issues. This is a redevelopment project, as was noted a little earlier in one of the other applications, and we're treating, I think roughly 62 or 3% of the stormwater runoff. We're doing it in an underdrain sewer filter in here, which is the dark green area, and a split underdrain sewer filter in here, which is again the, the dark green area. This one treats most of the water in the back, essentially all of this area, and this one here treats roughly half of this roof and this parking in here. What we've tried to do is use our allocation of stormwater treatment for parking areas, which we think are the highest and best used to put treatment systems on versus treating roof water. So that was the, the guiding factor here. This one here, since you last saw it, we've pulled back all of the parking that was in this area, so that we had a 75-foot setback from the stream, which is in this location here, and a minimum of a 25-foot buffer from the stream to the toe of the slope. We've detailed this embankment here to be four feet wide with a little crest on it, just to get the height on it. So I think the peer reviewer thought it was two feet wide. It actually isn't. It's actually four feet wide. It's a little wider in that area. Controlling the peak flows leaving the site was extremely difficult, putting that model together and making it work. And when you look at the outlet structures we have, the grade differences, because they're so flat, we're hard to make all that work, and I think we've, we've done that with where we are. We will likely move this overflow from here, possibly out closer to the edge of the right-of-way, where it might have a little bit better access, but the outlet will still remain in the same location, which is the low spot on the, on the overall area. So we think we've, we've, we can address that comment without, without much of an issue. We do have, one of the other comments raised was this dead-end parking in through here, and what we'll do is we'll strike one of these at the end, no parking, so that you can turn around in that space in the event that, that the lot is full. We don't believe this is going to happen very often, that, that this is going to be full, and then we'll get into this situation. This is as far away from the chapel as, as it can be. We think that's going to be the last-used parking spaces. People will, will circulate in here enough to hopefully find empty spaces. And the pastor will go through some of the management aspects of that. Going through this quickly through the memo, we will put guardrail around these to keep, keep cars out of there. There is a couple of bike racks that we put in here along this, this walkway. Those are detailed on C2.4 already. Under the stormwater management, we went through some of the elevations here, and we're changing the detail sheet so that the detail sheet reflects what's on the plan sheet, just to make those, those work out. And we'll add the town's note. And we'll add the town's note, stormwater management note, to the overall plan. So we think we're in pretty good shape there. As part of our package, we've provided a draft of an agreement to allow the town to come on site and maintain it in the event that it's not maintained as part of their normal process, town's normal process. And we'll add some additional erosion control over in this location in through here to, as requested by Wood and Incurrance, Lawrence West, member, and through there. So we think we can address all of the staff comments reasonably well. What I'd like to do is talk a little bit about the elevations of the building here. These are four perspectives that I think were in the package in here. As you're coming down from Oak Hill, we'll have this stone piece here that will, again, sets the tone for the Rock Church. And we're looking for block letters here on the side of the building. You'll see that on both sides. This is coming from the opposite direction. You'll see that on both sides. That's the signage that we're looking to do. I think it's very classy. It's block letter signing near the top of the building and sets the tone without having a lot of fanfare to it. It will be lit from above. We'll have some lights from above that will shine down on the sign itself. The building itself will have a little bit of metal siding in here. According to the architect, it will be a gray metal siding with a satin finish to it. It will not be a shiny finish. It will be a satin finish so that it won't be reflective. And he thinks that was appropriate for the use. Given the size of the building and the light, he felt that that material was appropriate The other issue that came up was HVAC systems and where those are located. Those will be located on the roof. This is the front of the building here, and as you work your way back, this is the existing building. You'll note that the roof in the front is taller in this location, and then it drops down between the two buildings. The HVAC systems will sit in this location in here and will be screened from the road by the clock elevation. So we think they're tucked out of sight, and they're in a place that we can access them from below with a roof hatch, and that they're really out of sight from a design point of view. I thought that was just great from a design point of view, that Dwight had come up with that. You can see on the opposite side elevation, it fits in this square in here is where the HVAC systems will be placed. We're not only, there are two now that are on each side of the existing building. Those are getting removed, and we'll have new systems, or those will be relocated up to here to service both the existing building and the new building. So there'll be no ground-mounted HVAC systems. So we're pretty comfortable with that. The public utilities, we have sent the package to the sanitary district, and are waiting a response back from them, as well as to the Portland Water District. They had asked us to make a minor change to the service, and we've done that, but we have not sent it back to them. But we expect that to come back to us fairly shortly once we get it to them. With that, I think I've covered most of the issues in the staff memo. I'll let the pastor talk about parking and how that's going to work.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Eric Samuelson, and I have the privilege of being a pastor at the Rock Church, and very thankful to be with you all tonight. I can't believe that Tom handed off the podium to a pastor with six minutes left on the clock. That's the biggest mistake ever. No pastor ever talked that short. So I'll make my comments extremely brief, realizing that the clock is ticking because I'd love to have any inputs that you have for us. I want to thank Tom for exceptional work with civil plans. And so my part is to preemptor to discuss parking plan and off-site parking procedures. And ultimately, what the church realizes is with the Gorham Road improvement, which we love being a part of that, I truly feel that all of this expansion along with Gorham Road improvement really provides Scarborough with a church that I hope is a bit more worthy of the community that's already created here. As we expand the building and partner with Gorham as the Gorham Road Improvement, our goal in all of this has been to create a balanced facility. And balanced means that the parking is the right size for the number of seats, is the right size for the amount of fellowship and transition areas, and right size for the amount of classrooms. We in no way would want to create a facility that's too big for the parking lot, or a parking lot too big for the facility. So what we've created in terms of the number of spots that Tom's been able to bring together both with civil plans and our site and our partnership with our neighbor, is a site where we have enough parking spots for the seats that we have in the facility when the facility's full. That's in detail of the long version of text that I gave to you, but we run a 2.1 people-to-car ratio, and churches don't fill, you can't fill every seat in a church. People need places to put their coats, there's space as people comfortably sit. And so those 269 seats provide enough parking for all of our regular use. The only time that we would need to move to an expanded or an off-site parking plan is when you're having a special event. Perhaps some of those absolutely full days like holidays or things like that that provide. You all know that churches don't run full week to week, or day to day, or event to event. But for those special events, that's when we would begin to activate or possibly need off-site parking. And what we've done to this point is we've just worked with the community and we've worked with our neighbors. If it's a few cars, if it's anything up to about 20 cars or so, we tend to first communicate with the library. A lot of times, we're open when they're not, and so we have an agreement to work with Nancy Crowell at the library, to work off-site parking if it's a few spots, if that's not available. Then we go to Scarborough Community Services. Those parking spots and use of facilities, community facilities are available through the website. If those are available, we'll coordinate there. And then, of course, we have the neighbors at Hannaford and some ability for some overflow parking there. And so we've worked with each of those different agencies throughout. The real answer on parking for us is we know that Gorham Road will not be available for parking, so we don't park cars on Gorham Road. If the parking lot is full and we don't have access to off-site facilities, that's when our facility is full. So there may be an empty seat or two within the building, but the parking lots are full, and so that would be when the facility's full. If off-site parking is available, then maybe there are a few days a year where we might maximize the use of every seat. But churches don't function at every seat full. They function at, you know, ideally up to 80% full, but even that is a great day for a church. So those are kind of my initial comments on parking, use of the property and facility. And I think Tom alluded well, that our goal is to take care of every person. And so even when you get to some of the things like what would a full parking lot be like, those are times where we provide parking teams, parking attendants. They're out there with vests, wands, cones, helping guide people into spots and helping guide people out of spots. So even the concerns that were addressed earlier today about the dead-end parking-type areas and concerns that might be raised quickly about that. One, we're kind of single-flow direction. Everybody's showing up at the same time, everybody's leaving at the same time, so you don't have kind of head-to-head conflicts. But the other thing is, in a scenario where our lot would be completely full, that's where we provide attendance and people to provide that service of helping people in and out, or physically guiding traffic to make sure those flow-throughs happen. So those are my initial comments. Be happy to answer any questions. Thanks so much.
With that, we'd be happy to answer questions and hopefully take comments.
Thank you very much. We do have an opportunity for some public comment this evening, so if there's anyone here that would like to speak to this, please step to the podium. Public comments are open. Seeing none, I will close public comments. And we will jump into this. Roger.
First, I like the architectural drawings of the church. I think it really looks nice. It'd be a nice signature building right there on that area. There's, I understand Angela's concerns regarding where that control structure is and everything, and I'm confident you'll work that out. The only other thing I had is I couldn't see where you had, what do you do with snow removal?
Yeah, snow removal's tricky on a site like this. We're going to end up with snow being plowed, just like you'd see it plowed in any other piece. It's very likely to get placed along this edge here, this edge in the back, and we're going to end up with some around the outside edge here. Some of that may be in conflict with the landscaping. Our feeling is that we're going to have to maintain the landscaping, and we may have to remove snow from the site if you get a big snow year. If we get 60-degree days in January, in February, we get a break, but other than that, we're likely to have to remove some of the snow.
Okay. That's all I have right now. Thank you.
Yeah. I noticed among the comments that the staff had, they talk about a dead-end parking area and that you had indicated that the spaces would only be used when absolutely necessary. Do you intend to somehow rather block them off or only open them up?
Yeah. What we'll do is we'll take one of these spaces here at the end, and we'll strike it, no parking, turnaround space, and do that.
But that's not quite what I asked. You noted that the spaces would only be used when absolutely necessary.
Yeah. These are as far away from the use as possible, so they're very likely to be the last spaces used.
So you're not going to take any active moves to block them off until needed?
Correct. If there are open spaces in here and someone wants to park there simply because they want to park as far away as they can, then they're certainly welcome to do that. They'll probably be there alone, but that's what we're looking to do.
Okay. I was wondering if you could, at the next meeting, bring samples of the metal siding that you're going to be using so we can look at it.
I'll ask the contractor. We do have a contractor lined up and ready to go, so that may be possible.
Good. I'd like to see that, if you could do that.
Okay.
And then I have a question that's a little bit, I guess, out of the scope, but I noticed that the architecture of the old building and the architecture of the new building doesn't exactly match.
Nope, they don't.
Is there any thought in the future of bringing them into some sort of harmony, either by the painting or by some renovations?
I'll let the pastor do that. He's the one with the checkbook switch.
So the short answer to your question is no. We do not have an intention to try to bring that back portion of the property forward or to match it. What we have created is the entryways along Route 1 that create a very nice glassed appearance. Right now, we have unfortunately a pyramid with no doors that faces Route 114, which is an incredibly unappealing facing, I feel. I really do feel like we don't represent the community as well as we'd like to. When this is created, it's true, as you can even see here at some angles, you can see the back end of that building, but most of the views, both from the street and in passing, will only be of what we feel is a significantly improved structure. So the short answer is we do not intend to. And I do believe that some of the landscaping, and especially as you see it when you're coming from Sam's Club and heading towards the center of Scarborough and Route 1, you can see that a lot of landscaping design already covers some of that back area.
All right. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Great.
All right. Wish our stormwater expert would be here. This is just a lot of impervious surface.
Yes, it is.
And it's a fairly flat lot, if I recall. So, but your plan looks sufficient for the stormwater. It's just interesting to try to figure out how it's going to flow in the right direction.
Yeah. Right now, what we have is the building sort of creates a high spot right through here with the ridges, so that this flows this way, and from right about in here, all of this flows down to Route 1 across the ditch that's there now, and then over to the piece here. This back piece here, we're keeping this high spot here and a high spot here, and this comes down into this underdrained sewer filter. We've sort of broken it into two sections, so that we can collect this section in this bay, and then this area in through here, all flows down through here, and we collect it in this bay in here to treat it.
So those reservoirs are going to be sufficient for, there's not going to be a lot of water running off the lot, right?
Well, these overflow to a swale that runs down through here, and this one overflows to this swale that runs down through here. There is, what we've done is designed them so they capture enough water to keep the peak flows the same, as was originally talked about, and that the first inch of runoff gets infiltrated through the underdrained sewer filters. So that goes through the filter itself, picked up in underdrains, and then discharged in this location. So 80% of the storms are small storms. All of those will get captured in here. The water will sit in there from 24 to 48 hours. It infiltrates through the grassed basin, and then will discharge out down below. When you get a storm that's bigger than a one-inch rainstorm, you'll begin to see some of it overflow through the outlet structure and the riprap overflow in both of them. And obviously, when you get very big storms, a three-inch rainstorm and above, you get the majority of the storm will be overflowing, but at the rate that's there now.
As far as your photometrics, I saw your lights, they all look good. Are you going to be, because there's residents and you're not doing much at church and that, are you dimming those at a certain time?
Yeah, those will all be controlled, both with the photometrics on and then a timer off, or manually on and off, depending on the event that the church may be running. For instance, they run a Thursday night service late. They're likely to be on later Thursday night than they are any other night during the week.
So you're actually going to shut them off at night?
No. There will be, some of them will be shut off, but there will be some lights that will be left on for security lights and driving around in that type of thing, typically what you would see at a commercial.
Do you think about just dimming them all, or is that a reason you wouldn't want to do that maybe? I don't know.
I can talk to the electrical engineer to see if that's possible, but we might, they're designed to the current standards, which is not a lot of light for a parking lot there. You know, maximum of the two-foot handles and the like, so they're not real bright to begin with.
Okay. I just thought with the neighbors around, they probably don't want to try to be as...
Yeah.
What are your plans for during construction? Because a lot of projects we see here are new construction. I mean, you're obviously going to be holding services.
Yes.
You're going to try to, yeah, you want to try to, I mean, how are you going to?
So obviously, there's no change to our attendance or current parking needs during any of the construction and expansion. And so it's a use of creating areas where the right Ryan would need staging areas and things like that by, say, expanding out the parking lot before we need it, so that we can put cars over here and right Ryan can do staging here, where we still have the same number of cars functioning that we do now with our smaller seating area. So we're able to manage, because we're going to have a lot more surface footprint, to either park cars or to stage construction vehicles and construction equipment and materials, we're able to maintain our normal services in our current small building, move parking as required to allow construction to happen. Does that make sense?
It does. I was just wondering if there were going to be more cars out.
No, so there won't be. We will maintain, and right now, we're at the place, we did a very small expansion to the back part of our parking lot, and right now, we have zero need to put any cars off-site at any time. So, and that's what you've seen for the past. That was only completed back at the end of November, but that's what you've seen from the church since November. So that's already in effect, and that will remain that way. We don't expect to use 114 again.
Okay.
We can, it's legal, but we don't expect to. Just to the lighting thing, right now, we turn our lights off every night. Obviously, there's some door and entryway lighting that's maintained, that kind of security and entryway lighting that must be on, but the actual parking lot lights, we do turn off at night. And unless there's a town ordinance, we would probably continue to turn off the lot lights, just maintain kind of facility and access lighting for safety.
Yeah. That's good. Yeah. That sounds good. All right. I like the design. I think it looks nice, and I think it does add to the community and the mindset here. That's all I got.
Thank you. I think most of what I had here listed has been covered or addressed one way or another. I did see that you had a waiver request for a parking aisle along 25 feet down to 22 feet. I don't see any issue with that from my perspective. You know, I think you, you know, what's interesting about this is because of your expansion, it looks like you've tried to obtain as much parking
it looks like you've tried to obtain as much parking as you can on the site. Is that fairly accurate?
Yes, every square inch that we...
Every square inch.
The only thing we didn't do was put these underground, but other than that, that's where we are.
And so, you know, with that said, I mean, there's a lot of impervious surface there. I think continuing to work with Angela and the town and making sure that your stormwater management plan's ready to roll and in good shape is going to be very important to this project. As far as the architecture of it, you know, it's striking. It's a striking building, and so I think people are definitely going to, they're going to notice the impact it has on the community and the way it's going to have an appearance just on 114 in general, so.
Great, thank you.
You know, it's going to be, it's going to be great to see you go up. I don't have a whole lot else. Did I miss anything that staff needs information on for, and likewise, are you looking for anything from the planning board that we haven't addressed in some fashion?
I don't think so. I think we've covered most of the issues. We're going to answer the staff questions. We hope to be back here in April, and hopefully we have all of the ducks in a row so that we can get approved, and that keeps us on schedule.
I guess there were just a couple of things that came up in discussion that might be good just to have some details moving forward about recognizing where you're talking about putting the roof-mounted HVAC systems.
Yeah.
Understand, you know, I think if you're looking straight on from Gorham Road, clearly it'll be screened. Just sort of wonder how well those will be screened as you're coming down 114 or up 114 where you do sort of get the elongated view, so it might be helpful if your renderings could depict what that looks like.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, see how these little wings stick out?
Yep.
They really end up being right here in the middle of the building, so there's a fair amount of building in the way, depending on when you're looking in this direction before you can see them. But we'll get Dwight to add those to his plans and show at least a box as to what they're going to look like. They are fairly good-sized units to...
Right, and that's sort of a, I would imagine, these are going to be pretty big units, and so...
They are.
Sometimes, if they're perfectly shielded, buffered, that's fine. Our standards just say if they're rooftop-mounted, be sure they're buffered, so you know, some buildings, we have, you know, they have some modest screening up, so just be mindful of where that exactly is going to be located, and if it can be shielded and is shielded by a building, all the better. I'm not looking for you to do anything that doesn't need to be there. I did hear just around the lighting, think what your proposal is makes a world of sense. As Rick said, you are in the R4 district, which is a residential district, so I think it would be worth putting a note on the plan set itself, just about your lighting plan, that you will turn off lights, obviously, security lights, you know, I would just, you know, we can work on what that note says, but just so it's very clear moving forward. And then the only question I would have to the board is, are you interested in seeing the construction phasing plan, or is that something you'd be comfortable with staff? That's something we would work through probably as part of the pre-construction process, just to say, all right, you know, where are the guys, you know, where's the construction trailer going to be and all the materials going to be, and how are we going to maintain the right amount of parking? Is that something the board wants to see, or is that something you're comfortable with staff working on moving forward down the line?
I'm comfortable with staff handling that aspect of the management.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, I trust her.
We'll get Wright Ryan to put together a sketch or something for that.
So we can do that as part of the pre-construction, so you can...
Yeah, essentially what I see happening is this back bay of parking in here and this bay in here are going to get built just as quick as we can up front to give us some extra parking area, even if it's gravel. And then with that, we'll be able to really shift people around wherever we need them.
And just a second, Shimon. There's going to be a lot of coordination anyway, because starting in July, and I know you're talking about starting in June, obviously, Unitil's coming through and doing some of their work through Gorham Road. I mean, this is going to be a big construction zone for quite some time, so there's going to be a lot of coordination with that and the sequence of that is, yeah.
Yeah, and I think we can do that. Obviously, we need to do that all across the front here, whether it's the underdrain sewer filter or just the storm drain itself, you know, and how to make that work. And what I anticipate is we'll likely have either, we'll have weekly staff meetings, and the staff, the town will be invited to those. So if they want to come, great. If they don't, if it looks like there's going to be an issue, they can attend, if not.
That would be good.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Good evening. So we are now past 10:30, so we cannot take up any new items this evening. Anyone that has showed up to comment on that, appreciate you being so patient and taking the time to be here.
It's something you're choosing to handle. You've got to be pretty loud here. People are sitting for three hours.
Yeah, and we appreciate that, but this is a large topic. We know it. We've been through two of them, and I'm not sure with a minimized board that we should be tackling it at post 10:30. So again, thank you for coming out.